Here.
Green.
Everyone go green, please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Spicer?
Here.
Okay. All here. Advice for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of employment of particular individuals, employment history of particular individuals or corporations, and to seek legal advice.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimously adopted, to go into executive session. So if you can go red. Green, please. We had a shorter than usual executive session, so we had a ten-minute break. There's no resolutions coming out of executive session, and so the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone signed up? Or is there anyone who would like to address the board? Seeing, hearing no one, or seeing no one? Okay?
Hi, everybody. I'm Chris O'Neil. I work with Cornell Cooperative Extension, and I'm just getting the word out about a new Advantage After School program we're doing at Kingston High School. Every day after school from 2:15 to 3:15. We provide a safe, supportive, educational space for students to come every day. We work with Bard and several other local institutions to provide tutoring, resume building, field trips, interacting with the community. It's a, it's a new program. We're looking to enroll more students, so I'll get the word out to many different places that I can. So if you have no students that are interested, or no resources that we could work with, we're at the library every single day, like I said. Or you can contact Ms. Dierna at Kingston High School. These are kind of our contact on the ground there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the name of that program?
Called the Advantage After School Program, and it's through Cornell Cooperative Extension in 4H. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, we will move on to approval of minutes for December 11th. Have a motion to approve the minutes. Any corrections or changes? There were, there were two corrections that, two corrections that I noted. Did I send that to you?
No.
Superintendent's report on the BOSI's, the BOSI's report, the, the name of the principal at Creer and Tech School is Amy Storansky. I may have forgot to press send on the, on the email I had for you. And then, on 7C, the Cultural Responsive Education Quarterly Report, where it says, click here for the presentation. That presentation links to the Second Century Presentation rather than to the, so that link needs to be corrected. And other than that, I don't have any other. So we'll call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes as, do I have to, do I have to, do we have to accept those amendments, that change to the minutes?
I think it's just a correction.
I think it's just a correction, okay. So, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimously adopted? So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. But before I turn it over to Dr. Pedalino, I have, I have something that I want to read. And this is an acknowledgement of Dr. Pedalino's eight years as superintendent of schools. Which was either yesterday or the day before, the sixth, the sixth, but he's now in his ninth year. "The district is very much different and for the better since he started on July 6th, 2012. We closed four elementary schools and changed our grade alignment by moving fifth grade into the middle schools. Each of the closed elementary schools has been repurposed for the benefit of our communities. Anna Devine is a BOSI Center for Innovative Teaching and Learning. Mahar is our new central office and the home of the Mahar Pre-K Center. Sophie Finn is now the Kingston Campus SUNY Auster. And Xena School was sold to the Woodstock Music Lab. On five occasions, voters approved capital spending project, or a capital spending project totaling $172,676,248. The centerpiece is the Kingston High School Second Century Project, which is one of the anchors of the Kingston Midtown Renaissance. In our ten standalone schools, I think I'm correct in this, eight of the principals are new to their job title during Dr. Pedalino's incumbency as superintendent of schools. I believe the only two who were principals when he came on were Dr. Paris and..."
Brian Martin.
Brian Martin. And I don't know who is principal, who's considered principal at the preschool, but I think it's one of you, right? Dr. Pelicello. Someone here, somewhere, someone who works in this building is, is principal of the, of the, of the Mahar preschool, but that's not a standalone school. So the district has also made significant changes in educational practice. We maintain smaller class sizes in the early elementary grades. The social and emotional health of all of our students is a priority. We practice the tenets of cultural responsive education. We use restorative practices in student discipline. We have 70 students in the BOSI's P-Tech program. I think it's fair to say that all of us on the Board of Education are proud of the accomplishments that the Kingston City School District has made under Dr. Pedalino's leadership. And personally, I hope he continues in his position for many more years. Thank you. So now you can proceed with this report.
Well, first, to say goodbye to my friends, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. And as I said before, I didn't wear these eight years ago when I sat here, my suit sizes were a little smaller than they are now, but I'm honored to, you know, continue to work in Kingston City School District and to work with the people who work in the Kingston City School District in this community. It's been, I was actually, I went back to see exactly which date, and I Googled it, Googled myself to see exactly which dates. I wasn't sure if it was the 6th, 7th, or the 9th. And it was the 6th, and I, and I read some things, read some of the things that I'd said a few years ago, and I think they all still hold true. It's the people in this district that are special and make things, these things happen. And it's the consistency of this board, and the commitment of this board, and the commitment of our faculty and staff that has, has made this the last eight years, I think, really successful for our students and our community, and I think will continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, moving on to superintendent's report. First thing we have is Mr. Clapper, and he's going to give us his KHS Second Century Report, and whatever else he has up his sleeve.
I'm going to say so now. Hello, everybody. As per usual, we have a lot of things going on at the high school. We're in Maine, on the basement floor and all on the sides of the fieldhouse. This is the new nurses station. It's about 80 percent framed out. All the plumbing is roughed in. The electric is pretty much roughed in. We had a meeting the other day about the floor leveling, and we're, we'll be moving forward, and we're on schedule with that. Moving down that hallway, these are all rooms on the basement floor. Again, as you can see, most of the roughing is done. The pipe on this end is all sprinkler piping. They work from the second floor down. They're almost complete with all the sprinkler piping. The new sprinkler pump room is complete, and the water line is tied in, which was a monumental task. As you can remember, we busted a bunch of rock out of there for the buildings, and to bring that water service into the music area, we had to do it again. And it took them quite a bit of time, you know. There was a lot of actual jackhammering in hand, breaking of the rock we had that night. And so that's why they're a little bit, they're a little bit behind schedule, but they'll be catching up very shortly. Where the ladder is, and that wall, is the new adaptive gym that's coming over from Tobin. That side of the wall, if you take a picture of this, that, but on this side is the archery ranch. So that's what that, what you're seeing in that area is. And so, it's, and we moved that room from the center room to the edge room, so there's access to the outside, so kids can, the gym classes can be opened out. Moving further down the hall and around the corner, we're starting to see a lot of sheetrock on the first floor, on the basement floor. And on the east side, the rooms are starting to get painted, and all the ductwork is done, and the cable tray for all the, for all of IT is installed. On the first floor, rooms are just about done. They're, they're getting painted. The lights, you know, the light's been upgraded. Floors have been cleaned up. We're starting, the casework is starting to come in for the classrooms. It's shaping up quite well. Actually, that, that's not a great picture of that, but we have one cabinet there for approval. On Monday, we had an approval of the, of the casework, and that was it. It matches all the furniture that's in the Saul's room. So that every, every classroom will have the same setup where there's a teacher station and a couple of cabinets around the teacher station. Some more bathrooms that are roughed in around that area. And this picture is just, actually, it's a setup for mechanical contractors in there, but that room has been all painted except, and the floor needs to be done, and that room will be done. But this is, this is the big one for what we've accomplished. The auditorium is, the punch list starts tomorrow. We'll be completing the punch list by Wednesday of next week, and then returning it over to us on Friday. On schedule, about, about a week ahead of schedule, actually. And the stage was all painted black. All the, all the sound panels are going up. All they have to do is put the arches on the top of those. It's kind of not clear, but back in the back corner, there's all new rails and ADA access to the stage from the back of the stage. And so, I put that big one in there with that guy cleaning, because I wanted to say that they're also doing final cleaning right now. They cleaned all the, every chair was cleaned and brushed, all the carpets, all the floors, and they moved from the balcony down to the lower level. And over in that one, you can see the guy applying the arch support for the sound panels. And the other thing we accomplished is that we got the stomach...
And a type.
And, the other two pieces of art were hanging in the, in the Tobin building. The art department was concerned that they may go down with the building, and we, the first one is outside the library, and this is in the hallway as you come in the front entryway. And so, they removed over, over break. The one over there is all surrounded tile and weighs about 400 pounds. That was, that was real fun to do. Kenny, Kenny Hovers and Mike Peppers did that work, and they did a really nice job. And just generally around the district, we've been doing a lot of different things. One of the big things that we have right now that we're trying to get all the logistics together for is the big move out of Tobin, right? So we're going to move all the classrooms out of Tobin, so that we can start the abatement and get it to a point by September where we're just moving away. So we have half the classrooms in Maine that we're going to be able to move the furniture back into, but we still have half the furniture that we have to put somewhere. Plus, there's an adaptive gym that we have to find room for, and moving things out of all of that, putting it somewhere. So that's, that's going to be a monumental task, but we will absolutely get it done. We've been installing bottle fillers all over the district. Students love them, because everybody, it's the right thing to do. Everybody's bringing their own little water bottle. I think we only have one or two schools that still needs one, or doesn't have one. Most schools have two. We usually put one by the cafeteria and somewhere else in the building. And by, by this summer, every school will have a bottle, at least one bottle over, if not two. Heating equipment, working on that all the time, doors. We're doing whiteboards, ballast, roof repairs here and there. Over break, we had a little fun time down in Anna Devine, a sprinkle line gangway, and the gym floor was damaged. It probably has about two and a half foot hump in it right now. And I've been working with the insurance companies. The jesters were there. I've engaged with two flooring companies. They're coming up with prices, and it looks like we're going to have a new gym floor in that, in that area as soon as possible. And we're patching and just working at GW picking most things. We, we had a capital athlete project, and it was only one bid for it to do the path plaster repair there and put up other lines. It was about three times what was budgeted. So we, we're working on it in-house as, as we have time to do it. And that's it.
Are there any questions?
As you go up on, on the stage with the steps on each side...
Yeah.
Is that, are there going to be railing something?
Yeah, there are. And, and there was, there was conversation about that. Eventually, they were going to, I believe they were going to be the silver color of the ones on the back. People thought that that might be a little bold on those stairs. So there was a conversation. They are being made right now. I don't know if they'll be there on opening day. We have an event on the 30th, the 31st. But there will be temporary railings, and then permanent railings will be installed.
Now, what about the one in the middle? Is that permanent?
That's just a construction. That's, that's, that's just a temporary, so the guys can go up and down there. The stairs on either end have, have been refinished. We're not letting anybody use them, and they're using the stairs. Thank you.
And our event on the 30th of January is the County Executive. We'll be giving the State of the County address from Kingston High School's auditorium. So we're excited about that. Students are going to be in attendance and participate, and we've actually invited students and administrators and anybody who wants to come from other districts in the county to, to attend. So we're excited to open up our, you know, the new auditorium. The Wendell Shear Auditorium, renovated Wendell Shear Auditorium. We have our county executive, who is a Kingston High School graduate, really bring this address not only, you know, to our community there, but to our students. That's the thing to think.
I was at his, his swearing-in ceremony on January 3rd at the Restorative Justice, Restorative Justice Center. And I know he and his staff are very excited about making their, making their State of the County speech at, at Kingston High School. And I know that a high priority of his is engaging students. He wants to see them come back to Auster County after they complete their education, or stay for their education, be it, if that's what it is.
Okay, and next we have the preliminary budget report from our business partner, Mr. Olson. And Mrs. Woodard are here.
Good evening. So Beth and Andrew Shelby and I have been working on this for a little while. And so it's kind of, the way it's late for us to do this, we've been, we've been doing this multiple times prior before, although that's not necessarily, not early. But anyway, so we're getting on with this process at this point. And in a month from now, on the 1st of February meeting, we will have numbers to show you and have a serious discussion about where things are. So, we have about 19 slides, I think, one or so. Eighteen. So the goals are, are items that you've seen before. District goals, maintain programs, save the community, equitable allocations, long-range fiscal stability, which is here and here, Beth and I, speaking in the text of the book, of course, and seeking alternative funding opportunities where we can. We've been pretty fortunate. We've gotten some pretty good grants that we've heard about for various things in recent years and this year. So, hopefully that will continue to help us. Just highlights from the budget year that we're in right now. Back in May, 73% of the voters voted to approve the budget. The budget is $188.8 million, which is a 3.3% increase over the prior year. We're very lucky to have state aid increased by only 6% last year. Part of the budget this year is $2 million in fund balance appropriation. And then we had an allocation from, part of it was from the sale of Brown Street, and part of it was a debt service reserve thing. So we were able to also buttress the budget with $750,000 in that way. And the levy that you all approved was $105.6 million, an increase of 1.45% from the year, the year before. This is just a, a look at how the budgets have evolved for the last seven years. You can see they've grown from $146 million to $180 million over this period of time. The tax levy has grown fairly slowly. And let's see, revenue, which includes state aid, has grown probably the fastest growing line on that, on that sheet. I think actually this next slide will show you that. Actually, it looks like the budget is the, is the skib, the slide, followed by the other revenue, mostly state aid, and then the tax levies, kind of that platter. These are the changes, and I'll just, I guess I'll go just to the slide. It's a little clearer maybe. So our tax levy limit has been bouncing around. It's a calculation that we do every year. Often, Dr. Pedalino describes it to you, and then, and then Beth gets into more detail about it. But in any case, it's jumped around, and we've been able to hold the tax levy itself at an amount equal or lower to the percentage of, of the limit each year. So I think, hopefully taxpayers appreciate that. Please do.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, as far as the tax levy limit, as we know and as you remember from prior years, it involves a calculation and a couple of the factors that are included in the calculation are growth factor, which is a regional growth factor for our district, which is very low. This year is lower than it was last year. And the other number that helps drive this is the CPI. So they haven't released the CPI figure. Though, actually, the calculation includes the lesser of 2% for the CPI. So in some years, that has impacted the limit, and other years it has, you know, kept the limit lower. The other factor is also our capital tax levy, which is the portion of our tax levy the difference between what we have to pay for our bond payments and the state aid. And so if there's any particular year where that changes, shifts in one direction or the other, it will impact the tax levy limit. So those are things that we're looking at on a long-term basis, and they definitely have, have, will affect that. As well as pilots, changes to the pilots. For example, the last few years, our pilots have been fairly stable, but next year, our pilot payments will be going up, which has inverse effect on the tax cap. But we would increase our revenues, and that's with the addition of a couple of other pilot payments that are going to be happening next year. It will increase 10%.
There'll be a quiz on that immediately after the meeting. So, because our tax levy is about $100 million, 1% of our tax levy is about, obviously, $1 million. And so, if you look at, if you look here, the difference between 2.62 and 3.60 is about 1%. So in some fashion, there was 100, there was $1 million we could have levied there that the board chose not to. And in the case of, you know, that other gap there, 3.37198, that's probably close to $1.5 million that we didn't levy, we chose not to. And again, in the case of Ford, 2.5 at the beginning. So, just to give you a sense of what we've not levied to protect taxpayers and, and, you know, still be able to work forward. So, this slide is similar to one that we've used before about budget development, you know, trying to get input in various ways, including budget forums. And then, you know, looking at all the numbers, which is one thing we're doing right now internally. We're just looking at everything, including staffing levels. Mostly, we're looking at salaries, we're looking at benefits, we're looking at the cost of those things. The big numbers in the budget, obviously, are salaries, benefits. So, you know, that's where we, that's where we focus. Debt service is becoming a big, a big one itself, actually, with the projects we've done.
At this point in time, you know, we're just starting the budget development process, and some of these figures we know, some of these things we know, but many of them we don't know. We're trying to find out that information. As well as on the other side is on the state aid, state aid side. For example, our debt service payments, we know what our bond payments are. We know what our debt service schedules are. We now have contracts with most of our units, our bargaining units, so we're able to estimate our salary information for next year pretty well. So it's just a matter of staffing levels. So some of the information we have, and some of the will be coming over the next couple of months.
Right, so for example, we don't know what our health insurance increases are going to be yet. We don't know exactly what the retirement system increase is going to be either.
And we just received the BOSI's service request.
Yes. Okay, so the budget is obviously a cyclic kind of a thing. We, you know, analyze the prior year, you know, look at contracts. As we move around the circle, state aid, estimates, et cetera. Budget goals, et cetera. Board finally adopts, voters approve. Hopefully, we monitor, and then we start, start again. So, never-ending cycle. So the reference sources, as you, as you well know, the biggest one is the tax levy, about $100 million of the 180. State aid is about 16x million these days. So between those two, there's about 170 million. The rest is, the rest is between the appropriated fund balance, pilots, interest, et cetera. And the expenses, well, as we see, I think a slide is coming right up. We'll sort of show this maybe a little bit better. So here's the revenue. So again, 68 million this year, the state aid, 105 million on the levy, and then the other three amounts are much smaller, as you know. So on the expense side, 73, in excess of 73% this year of our costs involve labor. So that's salaries and benefits. The other, the other things, the next highest thing is BOSI's. That's at almost 7%. Then you can see the other things, transportation, debt service, et cetera. Transportation is about $8 million, so that's a hefty, hefty piece of the budget. Just narrowing down to that 73%, that's human resources. This is what it looks like. So I'll just, that, that piece, 60% of that is salaries. Health insurance, 28%. I used to be fond of saying that one out of every, more than one every $5 we spend is on health insurance in this district. And I suspect that's still true. Retirement, Social Security, and then other benefits. So, that's the set, this is what the, how that 73% that is labor cost is divided up. So some considerations for this year, for next year, sorry. You know, we still have state aid projections that, you know, are unfulfilled as, as of now. Tax levy limit, we've done, we've done some preliminary work in the tax levy limit. It looks like it might well be a bit under 2%. I'm thinking it's going to be somewhere between, say, 1.7% and 2, maybe 2.1%. So the amount from coming from the tax levy would be probably an extra $2 million. And we have fixed costs and state federal mandates, of course. So I wanted to get a little more specific about some of the... So I want to be a little more specific about some of the issues that we are thinking about this year. Some of you are aware that, well, the governor gave his state of the, state address today, and I wasn't able to listen to it, but it's obviously been in the news a lot that there's a six billion dollar gap. And many of you know that's school aid and Medicaid are the two largest items in the budget. So that doesn't mean that they're in danger, but it means that they might be in danger, or, you know, who knows what. But anyway, so we're, you know, kind of hopeful that, that we'll be, that state aid option won't be cut, hopefully we'll get some more money there, but the six billion dollar deficit is worrisome. Our special ed spending has been rising very fast, and that's just a factor of the children that we are, that are coming into the district and their needs. But, and so we're mandated to do what we do, but it's cost us more and more money to do those things. The budget is up in the last two years over five million dollars. The section of the budget that involves BOSI's and out-of-district placement is actually up fifteen percent. Last year alone, and we have a big increase in port this year, we've had unbudgeted BOSI's costs of a million dollars this year alone. So special ed is, is an area that costs a lot of money and will continue to. So E N L, we've had an increase between the beds twenty seventeen and nineteen, numbers of thirty-seven percent of kids. That, you know, implies teachers to teach them, among other things, I'm sure. Some modest assumptions about our health insurance would lead us to believe that it might cost us three million dollars more for health insurance next year. Now again, it's too early to know what's going to happen there, but again, modest assumptions. We have more people involved with health insurance this year, more bodies, that is. And then we have future tax levy involving debt payments associated with our capital Mr. Shaw, as he went through the capital projects that we've initiated over the years, and obviously there's a lot of debt involved in financing those projects. And even with the low percentage interest cost that we have, it's still a lot of money. I mean, you can imagine, you know, you know, the amounts that we're financing are very large, so.
Basically, well, the one, one of the, we have two projects that will still be, we have borrowed yet for, did borrow for phase two. We borrowed on the short term a bond assistance patient note in November, which will be paying next year. I just paid that in phase two. We will be bonding for that in two to three years, and that will be about twenty-nine million dollars. The other project, group of projects, as you know, is a sixteen million dollar capital project, which we just bid out for the different schools. That project is designed so that we're going to use capital reserve money and state aid offset, will offset the debt service, but we still will have to borrow for that as long as the state aid factors remain the same. Hopefully that will offset the payment. But there will be a capital tax levy for phase two of the high school.
And, and we reviewed this with you a year ago about the new, new requirements in, in budgeting and in reporting that are, we need to report to the state and federal governments in a, what they like to think of as a transparent fashion by school, so that someone could look at this data and say, and see, what's it, what is it costing per pupil by school in our district? And which will beg questions about, well, why does it cost more there than over here? Those things can be driven, as you can imagine, well, we don't know what's going to drive them there because we haven't finished this process. But by, you know, having a older teacher population get paid more in the school than the school, it can be a lot of different things, more special ed classes per capita in one school than another, et cetera. So it's a, it's complicated, but anyway, we're, we're fully engaged in that and working on the federal side of it now, so.
Yeah, I just want to add that one of the challenges involved with this is all of our accounting systems and our payroll systems and the way we charge things have been set up according to the accounting system of the state that's gone by all the account codes. And this is going to kind of force all the districts to change all that. So we're kind of in the process of determining the best way to do that without causing undue work and, you know, to make, to make our budget process and our budget having still be workable and feasible. So we'll see how that's, you know, it's going to be challenging for us over the course of next year.
So there's a number of people working on that, so that we get our accounts in shape. And again, this is just a little bit more about it, you know, in transparency and which will allow for local decision-making to be perhaps more effective. I mean, you guys will be obviously the first ones to see the results of this, so you may think, well, yeah, why in fact are we spending more over here than here? We'd like, you know, we'd like to move, move some money in that direction. So we'll, we'll see how this, we'll see what it looks like when it's all the way down.
I just have a quick question. Will, will we, is there a requirement that it's equal or that it's?
No.
So it's just for us to see?
It's a requirement that we show.
Or not equal, equitable, but it's equitable?
Yes.
Yeah, there is, right.
So there are two, two factors to this. One was the state reporting, which we do the state reporting in the fall for this year's budget.
Right.
And then by March first, we're to submit the act for federal proportion, the actual from last year.
Right.
And then going forward, we will be doing the budget and then the actual prior year. And when we submit the information, the data through the system for the budget, it picks up on parameters that look inequitable, or it will, will trigger you to review those areas and offer explanation or make sure that the data is correct.
So in a, in a school that has a lot of, you know, staff who've been around a long time, I mean, those, or who have more special ed needs classes, like those schools, we are spending more money.
Yeah.
In those schools, we have to provide a justification for the equitableness of that.
And, and information will be made public.
Right.
In June, so it's at that point in time that there's questions about how the district is spending the money, that's what we're, and address those.
The one thing that, one thing that'll be in some of the transparency is also, we have to report our federal money. So when we look at the budget every year and people vote on the budget, they're voting on the local budget, and that ignores a lot of other money that we get that is distributed in a different way. So when we see.
They both, they both have.
So when we see this, we're going to see all the money that's spent, not just the local money, we're going to see it, see it.
Like Title I and everything.
Right, and I think the one that we're going to do now, that one actually segregates Title I, Title II, the title money. The other, the, the ball, the state, kind of one, local, state one.
So as it says here at the bottom, you know, the potential value of examining this, you know, comparing spending, comparing spending with district goals, is equity addressed? And then, you know, it's important for communities to understand what the new data means and what it doesn't mean. So, you know, if a school is unequal because one school has four special ed students, well, I mean, that's, that may not be, I mean, that's important, but it may not be critical to, you know, how you feel about one school or another, but it's, there are reasons that you would be concerned about, so. Hopefully, we're going to see reporting that makes sense to us based on our schools.
And most of the, most of this involves basically around instructional. The rest of, you know, the, most of the support and administrative is kind of spread out into the home schools, so it's only a piece of really actual.
Look at that slide, the character. Oh my God. So are there any other, other questions?
So, you know, I understand this, you know, expenditure by school, the goal is to be increased transparency, but my suspicion is that if someone comes in and asks why Chambers is getting more than Crosby, let's say, or whatever, it is going to be a very difficult proposition to reconcile those numbers, you know, because, you know, theoretically, you would like to say, well, you know, this set of numbers on one side, and this set of others on, on another side, and you come down and it's zero, you know? So we're spending the same amount per school based on the needs of that school. But that's going to be very difficult to calculate, and it's going to be very difficult for people who are asking the questions to understand, I think.
I think you're right.
I mean, people have enough problems reconciling their checkbook, you know?
Well, we may be challenged to explain the difference between the number for this Crosby and Chambers. I mean, it's probably, it may not be ob, completely obvious to us at first blush, we're going to have to be digging around and figuring it out.
It's actually two, I mean, by them, by us going back, we have, the expenses are there, the people are there, so the numbers just represent what's actually happening there. And I think maybe the key is using that information going forward, what changes could be made or, or added or whatever services to.
Yeah. It'll be tough, I think. Well, thank you. Any other questions?
So thanks to you.
Can I ask a last question? I know we're supposed to report on the state at the equity in education, right? Would be any penalties if we're not? By the, getting state aid, would we be penalized if we're not?
There's been no indication that this exercise is going to result in penalties, I think. I think the state will probably take a close look at it themselves, and they assume that your community will take a close look at it and, and give you feedback about how they, how they feel about it. So, but I don't think the state has said anything about penalizing districts for that, or not being, you know, having equivalent numbers or anything.
The state just threatens with all our aid and support in reporting.
Okay, that's what the right.
Not in our reporting, the timeliness of our reporting.
You got a vacation on the lot.
Thank you.
Continuing on with that, that theme, one of the things that we have discussed in the past around this time of year is board, and I know not having the numbers in front of us for about another month, but really looking at and discussing board priorities, you know, board member priorities as we look at the budget, things that we want to protect, things that we think are, are new things we should consider looking into. And I think each year, we get that feedback from you, this is my cabinet and I take a look at those things and try to either make them happen or give reasons why, you know, we can't. You know, I think we're kind of sitting next door to one of those priorities from a few years back when we discussed, pre-K. So I, I know this could be under Board of Education, but as long as we're rolling through that, I think, I mean, we could open that conversation right now.
Right, that was the intention. We'd have the budget presentation, and we'd go into the Board of Education, and those discussion, that discussion of priorities would immediately follow, so.
Okay.
Mrs. Shear?
Sure, okay. I did watch the state of the state address, and I was very happy, who knows what will happen with it, but I was very happy to hear the governor say he wants a sensible formula for computing foundation aid and to create more equity from district to district. Now, within the district is a different story. We're talking about individual schools, but from district to district, because that's been our perennial, you know, cry, that poorer districts really get penalized, but richer districts have more money to spend on the students. So I was happy to hear that, and, and he had, I don't know if this was Andrew Cuomo original, but he did say that he was disturbed by the hate crimes that have occurred in the last little while. And he said, we want to, to impress upon our students that love is the strongest four-letter word, not hate. So in keeping with that, I would like to see our district continue to support and finance this social-emotional learning initiatives that we've started, mental health initiatives for both students and staff, and, and emphasize that, so.
Dr. Scholz?
Yeah, I would agree with Mrs. Shear. I mean, I think we are sitting next door to a priority, and I'd like to see us continue to grow this, the Maha program, but also, Mrs. Shear said about the SEL programs, and specifically, I think we've done some really important work around restorative practices, and I would really like to protect that. I think we're really getting to a place where we have the coaching that we need and the support that we need for teachers and for administrators in the moment in the schools. And I, that's been an important addition that I think has enabled us to really enact those principles in some pretty serious ways, and so I would like to protect those things.
Okay. Mrs. Jordan's not able to be with us tonight, but she sent an email to us, to colleagues, and her thoughts are much the same. She said, she wrote, "I would like to be, I would like to see if it is possible to provide training for mental health first," I'm sorry, "for mental health first aid, even if we can only start by training a turnkey group this summer. It may be time to evaluate some of the social-emotional programs by surveying our faculty and staff to ensure we are funding those programs, meeting the needs of our district. I don't know if it has an impact on the budget." We also spoke about surveying our advanced honors and extracurricular programs to assess our access. I don't know if that requires a budget as well. And I think what she means by that is assessing these programs as far as equity of, of access, meaning, is, is there disproportionality's built into those programs among various subgroups? Or, and, and if so, is there anything that we can do to reduce that disproportionality? We've spent a lot of time in the last several years dealing with disproportionality of discipline, but that disproportionality also extends into other areas of our educational programs. And that's one of the board goals, I believe, maybe on one of these signs over here, I Any other? So I have one that, it's not, it's not a priority, it's, I don't expect it to be accomplished in any short order. I was at, I visited the robotics club at the high school yesterday afternoon, and I think there were probably twelve students or thirteen students there. At least two, and I think three of them said to me, "We need to have more coding instruction in our curriculum." And I've been a proponent of that, I don't know how vociferous, for a long time. And I also read today an article that it was something that Dr. Corey from BOSI's had distributed to board members, BOSI's board members, Google education document. And it said that Sweden in two thousand and eighteen introduced coding in their curriculum from the first primary grade to the, so it would be essentially grades one through twelve in the United States, because they believe that it's a necessary component of educating for the rest of this century. And, and I, and I do know that coding teaches a way of solving a problem in a step-by-step manner, because that's essentially what programming is. You go a step at a time, and you can't, you can't get beyond one problem. You mean, you have to figure out how to, how to, how to get, how to solve the current problem, and then you can, and then you move on to the next step. And I think that's, you know, it's a different way of, a lot of people don't think that way, but with practice, one can. And I, I think it's, I think it's valuable, so I would like to see that. So, I would like to see that, to build that into our curricula over a period of time.
Well, if we invest a great deal more money in our robotics program, how do we have the robots do the coding?
Well, someone has to program the, the robots.
On a serious note, though, I did have a suggestion.
Okay.
That due to our socioeconomic stress and multicultural district population, I think it's an important priority to continue the expansion of our pre-K program. As a matter of fact, Reverend Charles and I and Dr. Feller Cello started a break with talking about the possible stress that could fall upon our district if surrounding pre-K programs begin to fall. And I think we, we need to be prepared for that. And we also know, all the research shows that pre-K programs are better bang for the buck than special ed. So, I think that should be a priority. I think we're doing a great job with it. I think we should continue. And I think there's a good chance, all of a sudden, a great need could fall on our district and we need to be prepared for it.
Well, I think one of the arguments made over the years for the Maha pre-K program was that by investing resources at the pre-K level, we will eventually reduce our need for special education funding. It takes a long time to prove whether that will be true or not, but, you know, that's the, that's the situation that you face when you're dealing with educating our students from four years old to 18 years old. It takes time to find the habit results that you can evaluate with, but I think you're right. Also, one of the things that we're going to be facing, and I know that the administration is working on this, so we have a, we have a bilingual program at our, at our pre-K center in two classes, simultaneous instruction in Spanish and in English. I mean, not simultaneously, but the children get one day of instruction in Spanish and the next day of instruction in English. And it goes on that way so that all of the students in those classes are language learners. And so, as we, so next year, we're going to have a group of 36 students who have been instructed in Spanish and English and they're going to be moving into kindergarten. So, how do we continue that program and how do we expand that program? Do we continue that program in next year's cohort of, of pre-K students here? And that gets more expensive. And is it worthwhile? And certainly, it's a, it's something that worth, it's worthwhile. Any student who grows up, graduates from high school with a dual-language capability, I think is, is in a very advantageous position as they go on with their lives.
I must agree with that. We talked about at least seven, eight years ago about the pre-K program, but it's still a great guide. It's beginning itself of everything. And paying attention to the pre-K is not only building up the kids in academics, but also the mental health. We provide better mental health for the young kids. So, as they, you know, moving up in classes, they are more stronger and more, you know, dynamic. There feels whatever might be, so.
And I also wonder if the administration might consider the need for expanding our grant writing capability.
For what?
Our grant writing capability as a source of funding. I know the city seems to have a pretty good grant writer. They keep getting money from grants, so anyway, that's, any others priorities to mention?
I would say, I think we've done a pretty good job of getting grants, especially for the pre-K. And it'd be great to see that enhanced and to see that continue. And certainly, if we can, yeah, it would just, it would be great to have that enhanced. And I think it's one thing that's been a priority of ours for several years now that's important that I hope we'll stick with, is the smaller class sizes and the lower elementary grades. I think that's been important. And I, we offer just a great range of classes at the high school level in all kinds of things, from the arts to APs to athletics. And I just hope that we'll be able to maintain all of those programs. I mean, those are really important and pretty top-notch. And new science and we've got some science grants coming our way, so.
Well, that's one of the, in the budget presentation, preserving our existing programs is one of the main goals. And, and I don't know of any program that I would like to see cut or I would, would like to, you know, abandon in favor of something else. So, we will work on it. Mrs. Shear?
We've just finished the building inspections of all the buildings in the district. And I would have to say that this board has done a wonderful job, wonderful stewardship with, with repurposing the buildings that we closed. When we, you know, do close buildings, they've all now been repurposed. And, but, we're facing the reality of aging facilities. Many of them are 50 years old or more now. The last big construction boom was in the late 60s, early 70s. So, I think it behooves us to, to really keep focused on the facilities because, you know, clean and facilities in good condition that have been updated to support the educational programs certainly are what our students deserve. So, there are a couple of issues that we're running into now because we did close buildings in the SED. One is lack of storage and that's district-wide. And the other is the need for paint. I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these old buildings, the rooms need to be painted. I mean, you know what it is like maintaining a house. We need to do the same there. And, you know, ceiling repairs and things that make it less than beautiful and it could be. And I know we've made a huge commitment to capital projects, but the, the day-to-day maintenance and year-to-year maintenance to make sure that our facilities remain in good condition, I think is important to continue to, to prioritize.
And I'm a true believer that, we used to have three painters in this district and I honestly believe that we need to look at hiring people with that specific job because they could paint every day in, throughout this building or throughout this district and still not get everything done in three years. I mean, it, it does. It needs a fresh coat of paint, as Nora said, is the world a difference. And our buildings need that as I walk through.
Any other comments? Okay. I'm sure the administration has all that written down and will consider it.
Actually, Camille does.
And the, you'll be able to look on it, you'll be able to watch the video in a few days and it'll all be recorded there. Okay, so that is the first part of the Board of Education agenda. Next is the, so we have a brief report from the Facilities Committee. Mrs. Shear?
Very brief because we're a little off schedule. I think on the annotated calendar, it's supposed to be on the 22nd. So, I will say this, on the 22nd, you'll receive a full report on the building inspections and the, you'll get the draft, the, or the finalized copy of the charter for the Facilities Committee. So, I know you'll all wait with bated breath to hear this, but.
Well, thank you for, thank you for that report. We can look forward to it. And then we have a report of the Policy Committee from, Mrs. Jordan is not here, so Mr. Lamb has agreed to take that.
Okay. We're updating, second reading of policy 1250, which is our school volunteers' policy. We're updating it. And one of the things we want to make sure is out there is every volunteer within the school district at every level, tier one through tier three, will be, need to refill out paperwork every year for the safety of our kids. The administration has agreed to take care of the regs to do that and to make sure that we are within compliance of what the state wants and in compliance with what we feel is best for our students. So, I present policy 1250 for second reading.
Second?
Second.
Okay. One thing I would like to discuss, this was originally in the, instead of having this in the consent agenda, which we might have done, I really asked that we have it separately in the Board of Education because I just want to make sure that volunteers in the community realize that this change is coming and there's going to be a change in the procedure. And I don't want any, but I know we had, we had an extensive conversation about it at our December meeting, but I think it's worthwhile to have, to repeat that because I know a lot of people watch the video, either live as we're streaming it or as it's available on the website. So, it's not that we just have these 20 people in the audience that are listening to what we do. There's other people out in the community that are keeping their eye on us as well.
Well, once it becomes policy, because we haven't voted on it yet, but once it becomes the updated policy, then it behooves the district to make sure that it's out there, the information's out there in every building and that the public is informed. So, I'm sure you'll probably do a story on the website.
We, we're planning a whole kind of campaign of, of information for, for parents and people who want to volunteer. So, we've made kind of a multi-tiered information barrage. Some people do it.
Good.
Okay. Mr. Spicer stepped out. Is there any other discussion?
Nora, when is the next Facilities meeting?
Next Facilities meeting is the 15th. It's next Wednesday.
So, I'll call the question so that we can decide whether or not this is going to be the new policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Mr. Spicer is absent momentarily, so it passes seven to zero. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept, oh, first of all, are there any resolutions that you would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Mrs. La?
D 22. D 22.
D 22. Any others? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda without D 22?
Second.
Discussion?
So, we leave the D 22 for the next meeting?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to move that after, after the consent agenda. We'll, we'll move that resolution and then decide how to, what to do with it. Okay, all, all in favor of the consent agenda? Did I, I called that. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, did we do that already? I don't remember. We did, okay. So, you usually announce. She's in the audience.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We do have one tenure who is being, that's being awarded tonight and is one of our music teachers and is Carly Guy and she is right there. So, stand up. Congratulations. And I say the same thing a lot of times when people get, most of the time people get tenured and I would say that it's not given, you know, it's earned and we're very happy to have you and welcome for good.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's move D 22, accept donation for KHS Athletic Department. And with them, we'll have the, so can I have a motion to accept D 22?
We're not accepting it.
Well, we have, we have, it's on the agenda. We have to, we have to, we have to put it on the floor.
Okay.
So, it requires a second to be on the floor.
Second.
Okay, so it's on the floor for discussion or for amendment or for postponement or for table?
I think we should table it.
Okay. Well, let's postpone it.
Postpone it, table it, I don't know.
Yeah, postpone. So, we'll postpone it until the January 22nd. There's a motion to postpone it until the January 22nd meeting?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's dispensable. So, we have donations. Mr. Lamb?
We have one donation from the Ernest Meyer Elementary School PTA of $170.50 that we greatly accept.
Thank you. Okay. So, moving on to old business. Is there any old business to bring to the floor? Dr. Jacobowitz?
This is kind of old business, very old business, but I know we've just started 2020, but I know that we will also be soon in the process of creating the 2020, 2021 school calendar, right? And I remember last year, we had a conversation about professional development days and one of them always falls or usually falls within the NICE SLAP testing frame. And we had had a conversation last year about not having that professional development day fall at that time because it really interrupts the NICE SLAP testing process. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's still on the table, especially as that population grows, those tests are intense and they have a short timeframe. And to have a day where the kids aren't in school can just, they lose a day. So, is that, so we can, we'll consider that in creating the calendar? Thanks.
Okay. And also talking about calendar, in 2000, November, whatever, November 3rd, I believe it is, is a national election, so schools will be closed that day. Instruction, for instruction. And hopefully, we will have voting in each of our elementary schools again, but that remains to be determined. Any other old business? New business? Hearing none. Board member announcements?
Just very quickly, having attended the robotics at KHS, I can't tell you how proud I am of our students and our facilities. Every district that was there, especially Borden, Perth, the man went on and on about how beautiful our facilities were, how well they worked and how incredible our students and faculty were. So, and Dr. Padalino sent us that email from the other person. So, kudos to Mr. Murphy and his team and all the work they do for us.
We also had a letter from one of the team leaders about the exceptional outreach that two of our custodial staff gave to a student who had an unfortunate incident. And I don't have those names in front of me, but.
Dave Johnson and Warren Alika.
So, Dave Johnson and Warren Alika went out of their way to assist a student that had an unfortunate accident and turned his day around. And it's probably something that he'll remember for, that that student will remember for the rest of his life. And they were very appreciative of the performance of our custodial staff. So, everybody, every one of our staff members goes, you know, they, they do their job to the best of their ability. And I thank them for that. So, talking about the robotics competition, the robotics team is going to, what school is it? They have a competition down in Putnam County this weekend?
Peekskill this weekend and Albany next weekend.
Yeah, next, and so next weekend is at Albany Academy, I believe. And there's a lot going, and there's a lot going on next week, I think almost every, every evening. On Monday, there's a viewing of Resilience at Miller School. Tuesday, we have a coffee conversation at Boys and Girls Club.
That's at six, correct?
That's at six. Wednesday, we have a board retreat here. We don't have We don't have a time for that, can we, can we settle on a time for that? Would five-thirty to eight, or six to eight-thirty? Would that work?
Yeah, I mean, I can get here by five-thirty. Is that, that's up.
Can you get here by five-thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Five-thirty-eight sounds really good.
Okay. So it'll be five-thirty-eight, we'll have a light, a light supper will be provided. So that's Wednesday. Thursday, there's a viewing of the, a showing of Resilience at, at Bailey, and I really recommend that anybody in the community that wants to understand issues that the school district and our children are, are dealing with on a day-to-day basis, that they attend that, that film, and there will be a discussion after each one. It's really very important and eye-opening, and I think it can, that, if, if more people understand what that is all about, I think we will all be in a better place. Friday, Citizen Action is having a forum at the Hodge Center on education. They're mostly concerned with education funding and, and they're really looking for ways to engage parents more directly in their children's education, and I had a meeting with Fanon Fraser on Monday, and I told him I would attend that, and.
What time is that?
That's at six o'clock, it's from six o'clock to eight o'clock. I don't think that there will be any hostility or anything like that directed at us. I think they're very genuine in their concerns, and.
That's the 17th, right?
No, it's this Friday.
Okay.
No, we have 17th, Friday the 17th.
Oh, Tuesday.
Should we go next week?
I think, I thought it was this week, I thought it was the 10th.
Seventeenth.
I thought it was the 10th.
Oh, maybe you're right.
You think it's the 10th?
I thought it was the 10th.
Okay.
Okay.
There's been a lot of back and forth on, I mean, they've had a lot of problems of getting, getting the site, but I'll confirm that in an email to everyone.
I think you're right, the 10th, I think, one of the dates it was canceled was December 17th.
December 17th it was canceled.
Yeah.
But it's not a coffee and conversation?
It's not a coffee and conversation, it's not a board-sponsored activity.
It's at the Hodge Center?
It's at the Hodge Center. Although I think that Mr. Fraser has, has contacted Mr. Perna about them sponsoring a coffee and conversation, but that'll be sometime in the future. And I also told him about the, the coffee and conversation at Boys and Girls Club, and I told him he was invited to attend, so I hope he does.
Well, the whole, the whole city's invited to attend.
Yeah.
The whole district's invited to attend.
Right. Yeah, it's not.
I hope not everybody attends, that's.
Yeah, no, our coffee and conversations are not restricted to the, to the organization or that's sponsoring it, or that, that we're, that is hosting us, so. Okay, any other board member announcements? Second opportunity for public participation, if anyone would like to address the board, they may come to the podium.
Free, Nora, I just have two things. First, Dr. P, congratulations, I am proud to have been on the team that hired you. I know you maybe thought I frowned a lot, and I listened to your answers, but I liked every answer you gave, except moving here. But as we stand here, obviously, it was the right decision and the best decision, so I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to comment on was the, what Alan and Beth talked about with this new reporting, and the school-by-school specific reporting, obviously, if that's a mandate that has to be followed by the district, we follow it. My, my concern is that as a young elementary school parent, that, I think at that, I look back to my days there, and I don't know that you have that district perspective, so you're just looking at your school and your children in your school, and you are their advocate, which is exactly what you should be doing. So to explain the amount of money that may go into a school, and then looking at that bottom line of how are those schools performing, the in-between, the gap there, the explanation of the nuances and the layers that explain that, I think are going to be a real challenge for the district and the board, and, and I, I guess it's a comment, I, I don't have any thoughts on how that might happen, but just to, to express my concern with that, that somehow we, we can explain it to parents, that there are those nuances and there are those differences, and the populations are different. So as long as we can, you know, the amount of money spent on each school will not be the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes, come, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Mary Ann Rohan, I have three children, I study at Bailey and I study at Houston High School, and I just have a question. Today's the first day of a decision slave session in Albany, and there are some bills that are up that might come to a vote, and I have copies of letters here from 27, 25 school districts and two high schools in New York State that have sent letters to Governor Cuomo and some of the representatives in Albany regarding some bills which might come up for a vote, and I was wondering, the board has any position or has gotten any feedback on Bill S-298B, A-2942, which mandates HPPV vaccine, Gardasil for all children born after January 1st, 2009? Also, A-973, S-3899A, which permits without parental consent or knowledge STD vaccines, including Gardasil, and possible other treatments to be given to children without parental knowledge or consent, and as we know, Gardasil is approved for children from nine, age of nine on up, and also directed A-783A, which allows the health department to approve physician and doctors can, medical injections to vaccines. These school districts were concerned because their members of the community had voice of concern, because as we know, HPPV is not normally transmitted in an everyday school setting, it's a sexually transmitted virus that is, does not pose a threat to general, in the general public school setting, it will not be spread quite in the American society, but hugging and holding, sharing food, pencils, so I was just wondering if the school district has any kind of position on that, or have you heard from the community?
Well, what I suggest is that you give a copy of this to Mr. Perna, and she will distribute it to board members, and we will discuss it at our next meeting.
Sure.
We also have a, there's a Legislative Action Day on February 9th and 10th, where board members from throughout the state go to Albany and meet with their legislators and, and discuss topics like this.
I don't know if it will come up for a vote, but this is a copy of letters that 25 school districts in New York State have already drafted in the Senate regarding that specific vaccine, since it doesn't pose a health threat in a normal school setting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? There's no need for a second executive session, I don't think, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn. Thank you all for attending.